All right, so I have Joe McDonough from FinCom on Zoom and RCTV.
And I think many of the same things that we are going to discuss tonight were discussed at that meeting.
Yeah, okay, very good. And move on to the minutes. You might have a motion to approve the minutes.
Moved, I've got, moved that the RMLD Board of Commissioners approved the June fifteen twenty twenty three and July eighteen twenty twenty three open session meeting minutes as presented on the recommendation of the General Manager and the Board Secretary.
Okay, is that second? Second, Mr. Colton seconds it in discussion? All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Okay, that motion carries. Karen, I know we kind of jumped to public comment. I don't know if you want, just jump back if you want, if you have anything you want to bring up. Okay, very good. All right, and now we have the operating budget presentation.
Great.
Okay.
Good evening, everyone. As you recall, back on October twenty fifth, we came to this body to vote for both the operating and the capital budget. We were requested to go back and review a few additional items regarding the operating budget concerning the tree crew and the inclusion of an internal tree crew. Tonight, I am going to present with, I'm going to present to you some of the updated information regarding the tree crew and our recommendation in terms of the operating budget. So I wanted to provide, first, I would like to provide the current status of our tree maintenance. Our tree maintenance requires, or I should say, there's currently a backlog of over a hundred trees that need vegetation maintenance. In writing in particular, the vegetation maintenance plan, or a vegetation maintenance plan is required for any tree that needs to be trimmed. As a result, between this, along with some submittals that need to be done to the tree wardens in all four towns, has created a backlog in terms of process. To give you a sense in the scope of the backlog, or how many tree calls have come in, since October first, as of November fourth, there have been over sixty new tree calls during the month of October into the control center to address vegetation interfering with our distribution lines. As a result, it can take anywhere between two weeks and two months for the removal or the trim of any tree. So as you recall, when we were here back on October twenty fifth, I had presented a, an operating budget that was inclusive of bringing internal staff onboard within RMLD. I've also prepared two additional scenarios to which we will be recommending. Scenario number three at the end of this presentation. A second scenario included is a hybrid tree crew, and then the third scenario, which we're recommending, is restructuring the contract as a result of our further research. Just to give you a sense of some of the proposed changes that we made back on October twenty first, our current contract expires in twenty twenty four, and we propose to bring in a new tree crew manager who was a certified arborist. Furthermore, we recommended the inclusion of two, two-person crews or staff for a four-tree crew staff. In addition, we recommended the procurement of rolling stock. As a result, the proposed improvements for an internal tree crew would result in one million dollars in cash savings annually for calendar year twenty five and twenty six. It would allow for the long-term cost reduction on tree crews by providing salaried positions over prevailing wages. It would also provide additional capital equipment for staff to use, in particular, the bucket trucks. And just as an FYI, from twenty eighteen to twenty twenty one, we saw prevailing wage costs increased by a hundred and twenty-four percent, particularly due to regulatory changes. So that's scenario number one. Moving on to scenario number two, we, we are presenting essentially that we would propose that the new tree contract, or a new tree contract would be proposed for July twenty twenty four to be reduced. It would be inclusive of a tree crew manager or certified arborist, along with one two-person tree crew or two staff. The proposed changes also have the benefits of procuring rolling stock in a chipper, and as a result, it would provide, as I said, additional equipment for staff. Savings, again, on a cash basis in calendar year twenty four and twenty five would result in approximately five hundred thousand dollars annually. One of the other benefits is it would allow for a long-term cost reduction on our tree crews by providing salaried positions once again over prevailing wages, and it would also allow us the flexibility to bring on additional outside tree crews during states of emergency. The third scenario, which we are recommending, is restructuring the current contract from a span basis to a daily rate basis, which would allow us to avoid being charged for the removal of small branches, or being charged for, on a span basis, to remove small branches, because they are clustered out as the same under a span basis. It would enable the tree crews to work on thirty-five KV jobs along the MBTA right away, and as a result, it would allow for additional productive work to be done by addressing the backlog of three-phase distribution lines in terms of growth, tree growth. Furthermore, it would allow for productive work by addressing the backlog of single-phase lines to be worked on in residential neighborhoods. So ultimately, what we're looking at is three proposed scenarios. Scenario one is the proposed budget that I had come to the board back on October twenty fifth. Proposal number two is a hybrid tree crew, as I indicated, that would be one tree crew internally and one tree crew externally. And then the third proposal is the actual outsourcing or entering into a new contract with an external tree crew, to which we would just continue on the process that we are right now for the next year, for calendar year twenty four. This slide here, I just want to preface that this is cash-based, it's not income statement-driven. In terms of calendar year twenty four, twenty five, and twenty six, where we see the savings is in calendar year twenty five and twenty six. In particular, if we went with an internal tree crew at one million dollars, or a hybrid tree crew at four hundred and sixty-nine thousand dollars in year two, and in year three, a proposed cash savings of one point one million dollars for the internal tree crew and five hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars for an external, or a hybrid tree crew, both internal and external. Ultimately, as, as we had mentioned earlier in the cab meeting, and to which the cab voted, their recommendation is to vote to approve scenario number three, which would be to execute a new contract with the outsourced tree group for us to go and continue to look at and refine the numbers as we see in terms of renegotiating the contract or putting out a new contract to go by a daily rate basis as opposed to span basis. I know that was a lot of information, a short amount of time. Any questions?
Okay, questions?
You said the cab voted.
So the recommendation from the cab this afternoon, earlier this evening, was on scenario number three. The context is that they voted to approve the budget, assuming scenario three. We're not, we were not asking them to approve one of the scenarios. The, the analysis that was requested at the joint meeting was, every, you know, go, operating budget looks good except for the tree, go back and reevaluate, so that's what we did. So they approved, they approved the operating budget using scenario three, which is an outsourced model for twenty twenty four, to be specific. What, just a little more detail, what we, what we discussed is that we will, we are, the existing contract expires at the end of June of twenty twenty four. So we will, in the springtime, we'll start putting together the specifications. We will modify how we did the bid requirements. And we'll go back to what we had done two generations before, per day rate as opposed to a span rate, and bid that back out and see what the bids come back in, and then that will be the March-April timeframe, and then take a look at this one more time relative to internal versus external group, in terms of outsourcing versus bringing it inside. But the working assumption for tonight's meeting, and what the, what the approval that we're asking you guys to make a motion on and approve is the twenty twenty four operating budget with the assumption that it would be an outsourced model.
The assumption is that there's, you talked about restructuring and renegotiating, are you assuming that the cost here is going to be equal to current cost, because you're showing savings of zero dollars in twenty?
You're, you're right, so, so the second, so the working assumption is that the, if the outsourced contract would not, would not go up for the next period, right, because we're going to move to a different model.
So the different model would offset any potential increase in cost?
Correct, that's the working assumption.
So maybe just give you an opportunity to talk about why, you know, given the cost is not necessarily more favorable for option three, what was the rationale for the recommendation of option three?
So there are a lot of factors that go into bringing in a crew internal. On, on one side of it, we will be trimming trees for as long as we run this utility, realistically. There are dollar savings initially associated with it, so we ran a three-year model. So we have continued to discuss with other utilities, you know, how they look at it. We will, we will do some additional analysis in terms of what the cost structure looks like ten years down the road and fifteen years down the road. This, this will, this will become part of the union realistically, it won't stay outside of the union. Has implications in terms of how you think about cost long-term, not just short-term. And then the other elements come into how we look at storm coverage, internal, and we talked a little about that last time through. And then the other problem is, you know, certain situations where you actually need the equipment that we would not normally have if we brought the crew internally, specifically springs, et cetera, and while we could use some of our equipment, when you get into the larger tree, larger trees, you're going to have to outsource. So there's some additional analysis that we think we should do relative to the net savings. The numbers are significant enough that it's worth more detail as opposed to making a final decision now, and that's why the recommendation is, let's go through and see what the bids come back at and, and reevaluate in six months when we have a little more data. Makes sense?
There's no possibility that you could go with maybe a hybrid model?
We might, we might look at a hybrid, which, again, there's trade-offs to every, there's, there's lots and lots and lots of trade-offs, and so as we dig deeper into this, there's a lot more trade-offs that come into play, but that could be a scenario that we end up with. So again, the, the focus right now is what are we going to do for twenty twenty four? And so two steps, we're going to rebid the contract, the budget assumes, and there's, as Ben pointed out, none of the other assumptions have changed in the, in the analysis of scenario one versus scenario three. But simply, is it in-source, is it brought internal or is outsourced? The net difference is two hundred and forty thousand dollars of net income under the, in this first year, under scenario three of outsourced, and so we think it's prudent to dig a little bit deeper into it before we make a final decision. That'll.
Further questions, comments? Bob, you want to say anything? Because I think you kind of led this the last time.
No, I, I think that's a good plan. I think that's a, a good idea. I appreciate it.
All right, do I have, can I have the motion? Sam is our official designated motion mover.
Deep in the packet here. Moved that the Board of Commissioners on the recommendation of the Citizens Advisory Board and General Manager approved the calendar year twenty twenty four operating budget as presented.
Is that seconded?
Second.
Further discussion? All those in favor, raise your right hand. Folks, that motion carries five zero. Very good.
Thank you.
Okay. We go on to item six, determination uniqueness of property.
Okay, so the context here, we are, as we've talked about before, we are pursuing the acquisition of roughly forty-one acres near Route one twenty-five in Wilmington. And this process, just like what we did with the, so with council advisement and writing documents, et cetera, this particular step is what we did with three twenty-six ballot fail, is to create a determination of uniqueness, which this property does fulfill. What we are not asking for right now is approval to purchase the process. We're simply asking that you guys sign on the determination of uniqueness, which is in the third paragraph of this document, again, very similar, three twenty-five. It allows us basically to keep the ball moving forward. It's an intermediate step fundamentally. I can go into much more detail, but we haven't made a final decision, we haven't done detailed negotiations, we have more due diligence to do, but this is an intermediate step that keeps the ball moving forward. Questions?
Questions, comments, or anybody? I hear none, no, take the motion.
Moved that the RMLD Board of Commissioners approved the determination of uniqueness property and waived the publication requirements of MGL Chapter thirty-eight B, Section sixteen, with respect to the acquisition of land located at the intersection of Routes one twenty-five and ninety-three, Wilmington, Massachusetts, zero one eight eight seven.
Okay. Is that second?
Second.
Second, okay. Any further discussion? All the way, please raise your right hand. Motion carries five zero. Okay, we're doing good.
I will send that out with a signature after this meeting.
What?
I'll send that out for you guys to sign.
Okay, very good, okay. All right, we're on to item seven, integrated resources. Bill, you're up.
Great. Erica will bring up the, the presentation, but basically, I want to go through our power supply for twenty twenty-four and beyond. I'll start with a load forecast, look at pricing, then look at the power supply.
We're getting, we're getting there.
And then rates, and then we'll talk about.
There you go.
An in-territory generation project.
Is, excuse me, is the FinCom member still on, on the, on the Zoom? I don't see him. Okay, he's still there, okay. I don't see him on the screen, so. Okay, all right, very good, go ahead, Bill.
So on the load forecast, this chart is showing from twenty twenty-four to twenty forty-four. As you can see, there's a significant non-carbon percentage of our portfolio, particularly now through the, through the late twenties. A lot of that is going to be contributed from high-growth nuclear with increasing amounts of solar and wind. We do expect the load to continue to grow due to electrification of, of transportation with electric vehicles and heating electrification through E-pumps. Our goal is to add additional solar and wind going forward, but we're also looking at adding generation and storage in our territory to help offset the supply costs of importing power into the territory. So the forward price curve, we do expect increased volatility over the next few years. Again, the red line shows the spot market price, the blue line shows what we've hedged through, through those supply contracts that you saw in the power supply. So the, the red line, you see a lot of price increases in the electric market in the winter, in the, in, for the foreseeable future, this is due to the, the natural gas scarcity during winter events, and that's going to, you know, drive volatility through the next few years. The good thing is, we are, you know, ninety percent hedged, so this does greatly limit our exposure to the periods of the highest volatility, and it will help us weather these increases in prices. To show you how the different power supplies stack up against one another, the dotted line that you see there is the spot market price. The solid line is if you blend all of our power supply together, that is the overall cost per megawatt hour. As you can see, it's relatively stable moving forward. We've been able to build a portfolio that does provide significant non-carbon at a, at a low cost, but we will continue, as you can see, the, the spot market price did increase greatly in twenty twenty-two. We do expect you see some of that volatility annually going forward. But again, we're using these contracts to help protect us from that spot market volatility. And as opportunities for additional contract hedges appear, we'll continue to, to enter into those contracts to take advantage of, of the best pricing that we can get. We are looking at, you know, the green line shows wind, we do expect that to change. Some of the offshore wind contracts are being repriced right now, and we do expect a significant increase in those, and we'll, we'll just have to, once we get those pricing, we will include that in our portfolio and, and make plans accordingly. So certificates management is obviously an important part of our power supply, and as per our policy thirty, we report quarterly on the, on how we manage our certificates, so this is for the first quarter of twenty twenty-three. We, we acquired about ninety-two thousand megawatt hours of certificates. We retired approximately half of those, and then we, we sold a number of them and held subbed reserve so that we have enough moving forward to meet the, the policy. So our policy is to sell eighty percent of the certificates that aren't retired and to maintain a balance moving forward, and that's, that's what we've done here. We will have a, a more detailed discussion about certificate management in December, so we'll talk about the, how we'll deal with them.
So, Bill, the eleven thousand balance, if it's not retired or sold?
Yeah, we will either, we will either sell it or retire in twenty twenty-three, but we carry it through the quarters. So we'll carry that through to the second, third, and fourth quarter, and if we don't need it at the end of the year, we'll sell it.
So they're just kind of parked?
They're parked, so that we have, because we don't know exactly how many certificates we're going to get, because, you know, the hydro is not, is somewhat unpredictable in production, yeah. And, and our, you know, our load is, is somewhat flexible, so we try to, you know, we have to know what the weather is going to be in order to know what our, what our load is going to be.
So one of the things I want to mention is, there is the proposal for the Financial Accounting Standard Boards to actually put a value on those, to show those, show the certificates as an, as an asset on the balance sheet. That is, that is coming down the road.
So, well, we can only hold them for a, a year, so it'd be a short term asset, right, it would be a long-term asset.
We'll see when the proposal comes out.
Yeah, right.
In, in preparation for the December discussion, as Bill mentioned, we have a much more detailed, again, as Marley had requested, we have a much more detailed discussion of policy thirty, and specifically, you know, our retirement strategy relative to this. One of the things that we're, we're working through on the analysis is what the, what the cost and value is going forward in time, but the certificate retirements, there's a bunch of assumptions in those models. But I think it'll be, it'll be pretty helpful to give you guys the bigger picture. But we do, as part of that modeling, we do make assumptions in terms of what the values, what values are. And then the other point, just Marley, that, that, that buffer, just think about it, it's kind of a buffer, basically. It, it's like the opening balance from the previous quarter, so just, you know, we don't, we don't drain it completely, but as Bill mentioned, and from, you know, when we, when we had a lot more discussion on the certificates, they, they, they expire in June fifteenth of the following year. So either you, either you retire them and get credit for them, or you sell them, or you're just basically throwing them away. Now remember, for all the certificates in our portfolio, we actually purchased every one of them, and we purchased them associated with energy. So not all of our contracts have certificates with them, but the, the majority, nearly sixty percent, when we buy energy, we're buying certificates with them. So we've actually purchased them, so it's prudent for us to dispose of them, and that's part of the reason why we have this quarterly process in place, which is part of policy thirty, that each quarter we have to make a decision, and there's a time window for us to do exactly what we're doing here. Now, that, that's a six-month delay, so we're reporting on what we, what happened in the first quarter. We made a decision two months ago, and so it's always a six-month delay, which is why, so.
Thank you.
I know, one comment, there's a lot of changes in New York, the wind, offshore wind, basically, been blown up.
Canceled.
Yeah, canceled. So, yeah, I think, I think it's a great, yeah. So I think that'd be a great discussion point, because you might have to, we, we might have significant changes to that strategy based on, on, on what's going on there. The costs are, they're basically the, the suppliers are saying, I can't deliver it at the cost points that you wanted, and they might walk away from, I mean, that's, that's significant, so. Well, the Massachusetts contracts are, they are walking away from the prices that they bid in, and they're, they're repricing those contracts right now.
So rumor on the street right now is those bids are coming back in January at the state level for the offshore ones, master users offshore, and the original ones were bid just below eighty dollars a megawatt hour, the new ones are expected to be in the low to mid triple digits. Significant change.
Yeah.
So it has a lot of implication in terms of how we think about our power supply portfolio.
Yeah, absolutely, yeah.
And we, I mean, we have to, that's not And we, I mean, we have to, that's not trivial.
Yeah.
So good, 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 right, okay. So, uh, these next two slides were just examples, um, just a reminder, there's no motion on this. But I wanted to, uh, to provide some additional, uh, because there were some discussions right after the meeting. But what, the way our, our rates are structured is that in the tariffs, the rate sheets that we approved, and we approved these last period to be effective March of twenty-twenty-four, we are basically approving customer charge, distribution energy charge, um, distribution demand and electrification. It's basically the top three, in the case of residential, the top four, in the case of commercial. Those which would be effective on March first, and oh, by the way, when we finished the discussion last time, we agreed, um, that we will revisit these in January, and, and part of it in the January discussion is to, is to update where the power supply is, and that'll make more sense in just a second. But the tariff rate is intended to be, or the fixed pieces tended to be in place from March first of twenty-twenty-four through the end of February, well, as long as we continue it, but the current snapshot is through the end of February twenty-twenty-five. That would not change, and for an individual customer, where the average bill is driven, and the other piece, just take one step back, a customer monthly bill is what most people care about, is a combination of the kilowatt hours used, right, with their usage times what their rates are. And we happen to have and have had for quite some time, an unbundled rate, so we have all these different components. And we are, we, we are looking at how to rethink about bundling those, but that's going to be a two- or three-year event down the road, because it's tied to part of the metering system that we need to put in place so they could do time use, et cetera, so anyways. But for right now, for this period of time, it's, an average customer bill would increase from just a fixed piece, roughly just a little bit over three dollars a month, right, that's, and just, that's a little bit over two percent. The bigger piece is the power supply piece, and the power supply varies every month, right? And we, you know, because as Bill had walked you through, right, there's volatility associated with the open market position and the actual usage, et cetera, and so we have, we have reserve funds in the balance sheet so that we dampen the ups and downs, so we don't jerk the customer up and down, uh, with the rate perspective. But inherently, the power supply, which is fuel, capacity transmission, and the NIP credit, those three components, those are pass-through, right, and those represent about seventy percent of a total monthly bill. So just when we, when we go through to do public, you know, when we do the press release, and here's what's really going to happen in March, we will point them back to this is actually a snapshot right out of the website, um, that we put in place two years ago, because two years ago, we had a significant, we had, uh, a, a rate change, and, um, that was the beginning, and we did it in January first. On January first, typically, the January bills tend to be higher in the kilowatt hours, so we had two hits, so it looked sig- it looked more significant than it was, just because of the timing. So we'll do a lot of communication in the January timeframe, but this is out there right now, um, on the website. Not, well, actually, I think we actually put the, the, the proposed rates in there as well. The second key piece is just from a dollar perspective, so the power supply increase, based on our current understanding, and it will change, of the power supply forecast, um, cost is going to be roughly eight and a half dollars a month. So that's where the net eleven, you know, a little bit over eleven dollars a month comes from. The big chunk is power supply, and the smallest piece is what we actually voted on. We don't vote on power supply, power supply is pass-through. So that's what these two slides were to talk about, so this is the residential example, and then kind of the other extreme is the commercial example. And as I, I mentioned to you, it also has a distribution demand component, and again, customer charge, distribution energy, distribution demand, and efficiency electrification. Those, um, are, are pieces that are part of the rate sheets. And this particular case, out of the average monthly bill of a hundred and, just under eleven hundred dollars a month, the tariff portion would be just under fifty dollars a month, but the power supply would be sixty-three. And again, we have five primary rate classes that we talked about last time through. They all, they all are intended to address different customer segments, so they don't all go up and down two percent or three percent, they're all a little bit different. Uh, and they're, and they're intentionally structured that way to reflect the actual cost and the usages as typical for members of those rate classes. So this was just to provide some additional context and background in terms of the decisions we made last week and, or last month. And we, again, will go back and revisit these and update what these look like, um, for the January meeting.
Yeah, please, go ahead.
My question is, could you go back to the residential rate for a second?
Yeah.
I just want to make sure that when we look at these percentages on the right, that's what we voted on, because the source line says this is a slide that was, um, from, excuse me, can't tell if that's an old slide, or this is what we voted on, two percent?
It's a, this is exactly the same, the only thing different is we put the dollars in underneath the rate.
Okay.
Yeah, so this is.
We did see, and there was some discussion that, you know, it looked like it was eight or nine or more percent, so.
Add it all up, yes.
Right.
No numbers have changed.
Okay, but I mean, the average person, which I will count myself among.
Yeah, yeah.
We're seeing two percent here for pieces of it, and five point six percent, so.
Total seven, almost eight percent.
That seven point six is definitely what was in the last meeting.
Exact same number.
Okay.
Back to Paul's.
And then there was.
Yeah.
Then the second question on that, okay, so it's consistent, I'm just making sure it's consistent with.
Oh, they're consistent.
Then, like, how should I or the average person understand seven point six percent? Now, again, to what you said, we're going to revisit this in January, right, so it could change.
Right, the power supply certainly will.
How should we under, how should the average person understand seven point six percent in, in, in the context of background inflation, background interest rates, and what's going on at other utilities? I mean.
Yeah, so, 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 so the, so two points, uh, so that, call it eight percent for simplicity, some would say, call it eight percent increase, is what an average monthly bill will increase relative to twenty-twenty-three.
Right.
And the majority of that is driven by the cost of power, which is pass-through.
Right.
Which will be, depending upon any other utilities, pu- power supply portfolio, not sure we're the same, that number will be different for everybody. We will put together a comparison piece, which turns, how do we compare it to local utilities, how do we compare, you know, local utilities, MLP and otherwise. Um, but we have consistently been in the middle of the group.
Okay, and so the other part of that question was, we all understand there's a background of what's going on in the economy.
Yeah.
Of high interest rates, like a ten-year treasuries or get close to five. Social Security had a COLA of eight point seven percent last year, and so on and so forth. I just bought a CD at five point five percent for a year. So should we be, when we look at seven point six percent, should we be understanding that that's sort of in the ballpark of what's going on elsewhere in the economy?
Yeah, I think that's, I think that's a fair statement, yeah, I think that's a good, that's a good observation, yeah, I think.
Or is it exceptional and it's, uh, uh, open? So that's, yeah, it's a yes?
I, I think it's reflective of the, of the general, uh, economic environment. Yeah. I think it's a, you know, it's, it's lower than I was expecting to be, to be honest, in terms of what we're trying to do.
Because we did have a difference of opinion on the board, which was unusual.
Sure.
Last meeting, so I, I would like, I'd be interested in understanding from my colleagues why there was opposition, and in one case, a not, not present voter, or not vote by the chair, having put it on the agenda. That's all, I mean, it's a good ques- it's, it's what we do, we do two things, we hire this guy, or whoever, and we separate, it's kind of all we do. So it's good to have this discussion again, I think. And hearing from more colleagues on it.
Yeah, um, when, when we break the rates down, I think it's very important to show what's pass-through and what's controlled. And like, you, you, you have the fuel charge, power capacity, and the credit, that seventy-five percent of the rate increase is uncontrollable. But if you try to say.
It's our best estimate.
If, right, and if you say, you know, we control twenty-five percent of the rate increase, and then, but seventy-five percent is pass-through, I, I don't think that's a good story. It's very difficult to understand, I just think somewhere on, on that chart, if you just write pass-through, and pass-through, 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 that, that just maybe highlights that, I know you're trying to break it down that way, but something that just indicates that, that's out of red light control. And, and the majority of your rate increases are from things that are outside of your control. We control a small, the, the small, the upper portion, where, you know, we increase because we have to do, you know, more copper lines, you know, new transformers, all that stuff. But I think, how, how can you message that, the colors, break it down, it's great, but that the cluster of the, the three, um, for especially big creepers residential, are the ones, maybe somehow, I don't know how to repackage that, but.
Yeah, I think, so I think tha- tha- that's one of the takeaways from last meeting, and why we, we just wanted to bring it up again today. But the messaging, you know, we're, we're trying to refine the messaging, because we're in a very different world in these past couple of years and going forward than we were, you know, from twenty-ten to twenty-twenty, right? Things are just flat, right, well, there was a, there were, there's a twenty, there was a noteworthy rate increase in twenty-seventeen, there was another one, I believe, in twenty-twelve. Um, but generally speaking, the indus- the energy industry was flat, for a whole bunch, so, but that's not the way it is anymore. But I think, you know, how we, how we walk people through this, you know, and it's, and that's what we try, you know, variable sub-power, supply, pass-through, and we'll work on, we'll work on that language, so we've got, you know, we've got two months to work on that stuff. The, the, the key thing, I think, for the customer to understand, well, there's two factors. One, and this goes back to the points you guys have all brought up, usage is a key driver, right? So how do you reduce usage, or how do you manage usage, right? And for some people, that's important, and this is not, which is all in discussion, but that's a key driver. And then what are the respective rates, and out of the rates, you know, what are the elements that we have direct control over, and then what are the other ones that we have more good exposure to? I think, so I, so we'll work on that, on that, um, we'll work on the messaging. In fact, you know, what we'll probably do, well, actually, we will have it drafted, we will have, we will have a drafted press release, before we talk about this again in January, please.
So since the pass-through is without a doubt something we can't control, we don't actually vote on that part.
You did not vote on that part.
And we never.
You don't vote on that part, you can't vote on that part.
So if we were to have this vote that we had in October tonight, would you two vote yes now?
Well, let, let me stay first up, because Mr. Al Tovid asked him to explain the present vote. Basically, it came down to a two-to-one. It was a three-to, three-to-one at that point. Uh, my idea was I, I was unhappy with the number of ten percent. I just felt it was way too high, way too high with, with what was going on. And I kind of wanted to send a message that we're, we're watching the department, is the message of the present vote. That's why, that's why I did that, to explain, now, looking at these numbers today, I probably vote yes, because now there's a further breakdown of the numbers that I don't think we have. That I got, that, or other, that I understood at the time of the original vote on that, so I, I speak for myself on that. And then I propose that we relook at this thing in January, when we, when we're maybe a little bit more, I want to use a solid ground, but more rather than flexibility, flex around, yeah, right. So that, that's why I, I voted present, just a gimmick, it, it, not a gimmick, but just one of my thoughts, the thought process.
I'm curious if Bob's taking that, you know, Bob is, is, is our utility guy on the board, so I'm, I'm curious, but do, do you have a different take, or do you think it's excessive, that whatever?
Well, we're on an upward trajectory, right, and, and we're constantly on an upward trajectory. And every year, you know, the great thing about red light is it's lower cost of power. Now, if we start chipping at, you know, eight, eight percent, nine percent, eight percent, nine percent, within three years, you're, you're IOU. Of, I'm not, I, I, you know, I, you're, you're getting closer and closer, so your, your, the value that you promote is disappearing. And, and I, I think we can afford to go at a slower pace of rate increases. That, that, I, I, and again, um, you know, rather than being, you know, again, double-digit increases are scary.
Sure.
When you look at it at eight dollars, it doesn't sound like much, because the majority is, okay, it's, it's, it's a pass-through cost, but yet, you know, you're still increasing that, that amount, uh, that, that's my take on it. But I, I think, uh, Greg and, and, and team has done a, a good job breaking it down. And I think if you, you know, we come back and look at it again in January, and you have some more solid, you get some projections of where you think the width is going to go, and, and how it's going to go, that, that, I think that's the, the right time, um, rather than now just kind of taking swag at it with.
And that's probably what we'll do next year, we'll, we'll make this a January event, not a October event, that's a different problem, another lesson learned.
I, I, I completely, you know, understand the, the, the planning of it, but I think if, if you react, if we can react quicker, you know, that's a lot to ask from, from your team and, and everybody here, but just that, when you're interested, if you know you're going to get slammed with a cold winter, that, that's a, that's a game changer for a lot of people, so.
Right, yeah.
But you told us in October, you said, but I do need to know this piece so I can get my twenty-twenty-four budget done, so that was also why you brought it up in October.
Yeah.
So if you did wait till January next time, then how would you massage that?
Yeah, and that, and we'll have to digest that one too, but the good, the related piece that, again, seventy percent of that budget, just like the rates, again, the rates have to, expenses drive the rates, right, because we're not, not for profitability. One of the things that we're trying to do right now, um, to avoid, so the big picture is load is growing due to regulatory and legislative drivers, right? We need to, we need to build a different network to handle that load, which is why we did two periods ago the load forecast, and we continue to update that, and it's better than any forecast, it's not perfect, goodness gracious, nobody knows the future. But we have to have a clear idea, a really, a reasonable idea of what it looks like, because the investments that we make now are going to be in place, hopefully in one, four years, right? I'm teasing about, you know, ten, ten or twenty years down the road, right, some of the equipment anyways. So, you know, we're, we're making decade, uh, decisions in terms of improvements. We fund those right now, well, historically, the only source of those funds are ratepayer dollars, and that's the net income that comes off the bottom, and that net income basically feeds the capital budget. Now, we're in a very good position from a cash position, because we, again, we continue to manage the business very well. And going forward, we have access to different funds, so it's tied directly to it, but the variability of, from a budget perspective to actual, it is driven dramatically by the power supply. Because again, we incur those every month, we do our best to estimate, but we incur those every month. So I think to add to your question, have a clear answer, other than, there's probably, you know, we don't always spend everything we budget, whether it's capital side, and there's a, we walked through that process before, we have a higher capital budget, because we can't start the bid process without having it in the budget, and a whole bunch of reasons why we do stuff, and now the budget cycle, the bid cycles take, you know, plus one year, anyway, blah, 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 I said it nicely enough, blah, 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 but it's a complicated world, so, um, you know, at the end of the day, we have a strong team that is diligently trying to manage the fini- you know, the strategy, the, the maintenance, the build-out, but also financially. So to answer your question, the two tie together, but we'll, we'll give you an idea, here's what we think the rate would, so we could do in October, this budget would suggest, that's probably the way we should do it, and then we can, here's the final edit that we do, because we'll know a little bit more, right? Two months later, because officially, we're supposed to have the budget completed by the end of October, officially, I mean, because there's a process that we have with the CABE and the Board of Commissioners. So why don't we plan, just kind of thinking out loud, that we'll have an estimated rate in the October meeting, and do the official vote in January. We'll think a little more about that, but that's probably a reasonable way to do it.
Have you padded this power supply pass-through amount at all, trying to aim high, only so that hopefully it will come in a little bit?
Not purposely.
Or overshot, uh, okay.
Yeah, not, we, we, we try and be, it's, it's a, no, we, we try and do our best estimate.
Okay.
But, you know, going back to Bill's earlier slide, the volatility on the open market position, and that's what we heard at the NEPA conference, right? So, um, you know, uh, the gentleman from NextEra basically was saying, we're, we're about, we are, we are have entered three or four years of high volatility of prices. So that's part of the reason why we want to have a buffer in place, why, as Bill mentioned, you know, we worked diligently to move up from a seventy percent hedge position to eighty-five to ninety percent. So to answer your question, not purposely, but it's, you know, world events, and there are lots of them around them. The interesting thing that we've talked about before, and I'll stop here, the interesting thing that we've talked about before is that world of, we used to be a regional energy market. We are no longer a regional energy market, we are an international energy market, and hence, next, you got the point. So hopefully that answered your question.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, just a couple of, uh, things first, thank you for putting together this breakdown, I, I really appreciate that, it, it gave me a, a lot more insight in terms of what we did but vote on last time. In terms of the process, I think it's helpful to have a couple of check-ins, so I agree with October. I think looking at the budget first and bundling those two conversations of budget and things that we can control and potentially trade-offs that we need to make in order to manage what we can control, and the, the impact of the rate is going to be helpful. So I think looking at the budget, looking at the rate impact, making those decisions, and then voting on both, is probably the way to go. I also wanted to kind of, uh, just touch briefly on the hedging, because I don't, I want to make sure we aren't sending a message that it's completely volatile, right? The, the organization is doing everything that they. completely volatile, right? The, the organization is doing everything that they can to manage the increase of rates. So we are definitely seeing rates in general, but this ninety percent hedging means we're managing that volatility as much as possible. So, um,
And if I may, on that point, um, the other element of the, of the hedging and the contracting is back to the slide, the bill head, is that dark line is lower than the open market line.
Right.
So there's, there's another minimize the volatility, but also create savings.
Right, right.
Do you want to address that?
Yeah, I just want to point out, like, if you look at the purple line, the fuel line, um, that's a dollar thirty of the, the eight dollar fifty one cent increase. And if you go down to the pink line, the capacity and transmission, that is what we're paying the transmission owners primarily. That's what's driving the increase in that cost. That's something that they're building out the network and they impose that cost upon us as a market participant. But one way we can help hedge against that is by building in territory generation. Because if any, anything that we produce in territory, we're not importing and incurring that cost. So that I'm trying to set up Greg for his next.
That, that's another, that's another reason why we've laid up the straight, again, you know, we're, we're hitting very high level stuff, but there's a, you know, I'll call it intricate strategy, but there's a logic in terms of all the things we're trying to do, but back to the responsibility, you know, that all of us have to our payers is how do we minimize the monthly, the monthly bill that they pay? We want to add more value, but at the end of the day, we got to manage costs and that's, and we're working through a whole bunch of different pieces in, in a, in a, in a volatile, but fascinating and interesting time.
The one last thing I would say, and I think you're going to do this anyway, but to, to Bob's point, just on the comparative costs between what we're seeing versus IOUs or other, um, MLPs, you know, when we do that, look at that, just making sure we aren't eating away too much of that value, because I think, you know, we all recognize how valuable that is to the.
Comment on that. So it's a passer here, but at national grid, they're not as, they can't hedge like we can, like ninety percent. So they're primarily exposed to that market. So we're going up five point eight percent of our eight percent is this, they could be going up double.
Right.
And even, so even though we move up, they move even further up. And then they don't, they can keep up a certain margin of the problem more than Redding can. So they don't have to return that back to the customer. So like, if you saw like last year, in the winter, they, they, they jump it. So last year in October grid presented like a fourteen percent raise on this huge power supply cost. National Grid did that same raise on their proportion, was way higher. They kept that for the six months, that's what they found. They clicked into all this extra money. Um, because, but because it didn't materialize, that doesn't get back to the repair. Unlike us, unlike this, over collection has to connect the repair one way or another, whether it goes in the resabilization fund or some other, you know, back in the fund. Um, so even if they do slightly over buffer, it's got to come back at some point. So it, it's structurally different, structurally different. So I don't know if we're ever gonna get to the IOU territory, because that's the fix, which is two percent. I'd be curious what National Grid is doing for their fixed costs, because it's probably higher than two percent. Yes.
And two percent in a market of five percent inflation.
So this is more, this more stuff, like I think, yes, this is going up, but I think they don't have faster. I don't think, it'd be hard to consider. And ev- and in fairness, everybody's trying to, you know, we have a different driver, right? We're not, our focus is on the customers we serve. And we don't have equity holders. So we think about it very differently. And, and this team, uh, and I will speak for the team, right? We, you know, we are dedicated to do the very best we can for I think roughly seventy five thousand customers of the thirty three thousand meters that we have and, you know, all the, so we, like, there's a pride about doing this well. And it's an interesting problem. Which transitions. Go ahead.
So before we move on to in territory generation, I just wanted to ask about uh, rate payers who, or bill payers? Is that what we're calling them?
Uh, customers.
Customers. Who are on assistance or need base? Are we seeing an increase in that?
You know, um, I don't have, so I, I did that for you guys last year. I'll do it, I'll, I'll do it on an annual basis. It's very, so in our territory, it's very, very small. Um, and there'll be a couple, so to answer your question, nothing significant, but I'll have some detailed numbers either for the December or January. Um, and so that's one of the pieces of analysis that Bob runs on a regular basis. And Bob, Bob runs the customer service team that reports to Bill. Good, good, that's good, good, important question. And
Keep going, keep going.
One of the other things that we're doing relative to, um, asset projects in our territory for, partially for the reasons that Bill mentioned, economic and partially for reliability. But we're also applying for grant dollars, right? And, um, so we are in the process of doing another storage project with a different technology, nickel metal hydride, um, that would be a ten hour system. Um, and part of the grant requirements is, um, benefit to the community. So we're actually working on the benefit of community stuff and I'll talk at the very end. You know, we're, so there's all sorts of benefits to the community. Um, the piece that we have in right now are, you know, we are starting a program with Reading High School, the partnership program. So we, so we're actually, next day, we're going to actually, we, we, so we're putting, we're moving that forward, right? And we've done, and we've done this, we, we'll talk about the very end, but intern programs, you know, so we're, we're doing community engagement stuff. Now, that doesn't specifically tie to, um, uh, the financially challenged group. There are not many in our territory. Um, uh, in reality, but that doesn't mean zero. Um, so, uh, and again, you know, our focus is to keep the rates low for everybody. Um, and there are programs that we have in place. And in fact, um, uh, there was an awards dinner, this, our awards breakfast this morning to, I'm just, in a sentence, one sentence. It was, um, excuse me, it was an awards breakfast for good neighbor, correct, uh, which provides additional resources to those individuals or those, uh, family households that need a little extra support where they cannot apply for funding or relief through the state or federal government. So we can't contribute, we, we are not allowed to contribute directly to that fund, but we try and support it. To the extent we can. So anyways, that, um, Julie was identified as one of the people helping to do that from a communications perspective. So anyways, there's different elements in terms of where we can, the focus is on the community and we're pretty gates to the community, as you guys know. There's always room for more. Um, and we'll talk about some of the other. Okay, I'll transition.
Through the discussion of the topic. We need to move on. Okay, let's move on to item A.
Nope.
Oh.
Not so, uh, we, I'm just, I'm going to finish off. So
Okay.
There's three, there's three quick slides. So Bill had set the stage, right? And we talked, we talked about this last period, or, you know, last meeting. But this is the territory generation, right? And so from an economic perspective, from a reliability perspective, and from a compliance perspective, with, the world has changed in the past eighteen, twenty four months that motivates MLPs like us to own assets. And so we are, so we've, we started ahead of that because I knew this was coming. But so I won't walk through, this is the same slide from the last presentation. If you hit the next slide, go ahead. Um, one of the projects that we looked at, right, and we are still looking at in detail, um, is carbon capture fuel cell, right? And what I wanted to, we're going to walk through real quickly. This is just a setup slide for the next slide, which is carbon output. Um, and what we had walked through last presentation, we are pursuing solar in territory. We're looking at low temperature geothermal. We're doing some research on hydrogen. Hydrogen, by the way, is really a storage media, not, not a generation media, but we're looking at, you know, we're looking at some very creative ways to, to put a hydrogen recip engine in our, in our station three. Anyways, just, I won't say crazy things, but, you know, connecting the dots. Um, our goal is to get for all the economic and reliability reasons we talked about, to get in territory systems in place in our territory, um, as soon as we can, which is going to be in the late twenty twenty five, early twenties, twenty six period. And from the slide we talked about last time in terms of the big picture strategy, the, not a final number, but a rough number is to be roughly forty percent of our generation to be in territory by twenty forty. And at that point in time, we're going to be a million, a million one, um, uh, megawatt hours sold per year compared to the just under seven hundred right now. So with all the contract stuff that Bill's team is doing and the asset development team that the engineering and Bill's team are doing, we're looking at these opportunities. Um, so none of them are perfect, right? So you hit the next slide. So let me, let me just pause back just for a second. So on this, what we talked about before, just a little simple, this particular system that we're looking at right now, it uses natural gas. Right? It uses natural gas. Um, the output of it are primarily megawatt hours, right? We're using it as an in-territory generator, but it also, um, generates water. And one of the things we're, again, we're trying to think out of the box in terms of systems. But we are working with another partner to do long duration battery system that actually requires a regular flow of water. So the two of these paired together might be a nice combination. Um, obviously in the case of energy, right, we need to be non-carbon compliant electricity. This is not no, non-carbon. This is low carbon. Right? And we talked about the economics. We have more work to be done. So this particular project, we're not asking you right now for a final vote. We're sharing with you the thought process and logic and where we're going. And we're, we're trying to update you and the rest of the audience that watches what we're doing. But the other key piece on this slide and that talks about is the output of the system is CO two. Now, while, um, the majority of it is captured with carbon capture technology. The fuel cell technology is well established. It's works very well, very reliable, reliably. What's unique is taking carbon capture technology and putting it together. Um, our thought process is actually to sell the carbon and what we didn't share with you last time, again, to continue to dig deeper. Well, how much carbon are we talking about? And we're talking about basically one truck a day from the site. Just big picture, right? More details to come out. Next slide. So now the question is, what is this output, right? It's not zero output, right? There is carbon from this configuration, right? But the point is, is that it would generate significantly less carbon than the energy we are currently purchasing from the wholesale market. At a price comparable to the wholesale market today, keep in mind that the wholesale market prices are going up, but this is purely about in the environmental aspects and the, the carbon emissions. It's not zero, but it's low. The two charts here on the left is an operating chart and the one on the right is a life cycle chart. So life charts, the life cycle chart is intended to also include, um, you know, from, um, from coming from the ground, all the leaks through the system, carbon, methane, et cetera. And to what, you know, if we look at a full cycle cost, that is a preliminary estimate analysis. When we get a little bit further down the road, we'll do a third party analysis, but just to give you guys an order of magnitude, life cycle emissions is, you know, it's in the range of a little bit over seventeen hundred. These are, you know, pounds of CO two per megawatt hour of the, of the, of the system that we buy from on the wholesale market on average versus what this system would be, right? Which is just under five hundred. So roughly a three to one ratio, not zero. And then on an operating basis, you can see on the left hand chart, um, you know, this is the marginal generator. Um, there's no coal facilities in our territory anymore. That marginal includes just a little bit of oil. But the big mix is the Mystic Station. That's a good example of a typical system in terms of what it generates of CO two per megawatt hour. And the carbon capture configuration, this carbon capture fuel cell would be under a hundred um, pounds of CO two per megawatt hour. So the point we just, we're trying to share with you, we are, we are very sensitive to carbon. We, we are working to be fully, but we need to be compliant, but we want to be as non-carbon as we can be. But we're also looking at what options do we have? So, so we've been, you know, based on the discussion we had last time. Um, we actually have a third party that can do some analysis fairly quickly in terms of, of the concept here. And we're continuing to work with the guys at Bloom. Um, again, um, we're going to do a, we're, we're looking simultaneously at other options. There's some other creative ideas that, that, uh, you guys have brought up to us, um, in terms of how to think through this. So this is meant to do just a quick snapshot of, you know, carp, the other piece that there's not, no system is perfect. But this configuration has a strong reliability. Um, the one drawback of it is it's got some carbon output. It's not zero. So, you know, that's again, not looking for emotions, not looking for votes right now. We're just, this is the ongoing, um, education. So questions, reactions, thought before we finish off on the integrated resources update.
So just, um, on the right hand side of this chart, I think the two things I recall us talking about in terms of the uh, the reduced carbon output there is the efficiency of utilization of the natural gas.
That's part of it as well.
That's part of it. And then the other part is the capture of the.
So if you were to have, if you, if we were to put on the chart here, um, no probably capture on it. Um, it would probably be something like a couple of the numbers, but roughly about eighty percent or eighty five percent. So of less carbon output, just as a fuel cell. Um, so just as a reference, but the carbon, but, you know, if we, if, if we go down the path of doing it, we'll want to put carbon capture and we're trying to figure out ways to make it a positive for the local community we talked before about. You know, there's a market for CO two. Now, when talking about the market for CO two, you know, question is, well, aren't you just pushing it downstream and eventually it'll end up in soda. Once you open the soda can, it's back in the atmosphere? Yes. And the pharma space? No. You put in the building materials? No. So there's a bunch of, there's a bunch of thoughts in terms of how you think about the life cycle of CO two.
Then I don't have a question.
It's, it's, it's an interesting puzzle.
I had one other question, uh, because I'm not familiar with the threshold. What is the threshold of what would be considered non-carbon compliant, even if there is some level of carbon emission?
Um, fifty percent, it'd be fifty percent. So on that chart on the left, it would be four hundred and forty.
Okay.
Yeah, so, so that, so, so from a, from a compliant perspective, slam dunk. This is, this is a, this is a more of a policy related discussion for us in terms of how we as our M L D want to fulfill the reliable, low cost, non-carbon mission i- in an environmentally respectful way. That's, that's, that's where we, that's the, that's what we're really going to be talking about.
Yeah, go ahead, Dave.
Got a couple of things. First of all, uh, there was a, a, an interesting email yesterday, earlier today. Vivek uh, from the cab just mentioned the fact that whether, if not now, in the future, the carbon emissions of natural gas may have to consider life cycle from the mining where it was mined to here, not just what happened at the facility where it was consumed and turned into energy, but what happened all the way back to the shale, uh, or the well, or whatever it might be.
In the, in the time duration.
Yeah. Exactly. And that, like, thinking long term, that that might be something we have to answer to or calculate here. Um, I don't, I leave to Vivek and others who know more about it, but just raising that. And the, the second thing is, we've heard a couple of presentations. It's obviously very interesting technology, solid oxide fuel cells. We have the vendor in the room with us here as our only audience member, other than our select board member, Karen Herrick. Um, I guess light plants work a little differently than towns, but from a procurement standpoint, I would like to see us doing RFPs where we're opening up for, uh, any number of, of people to come in and propose things that would achieve goals. Okay, carbon reduction, peak shaving. Okay, actually reducing consumption, so we don't have to pay for it in the first place. You know, you can save money if you don't, if you don't, uh, if people don't use it at the right time, it can be even more valuable than building technology to generate more uh, megawatts to serve the demand that otherwise could have been maybe reduced. So all these things, so peak shaving, demand reduction, um, you know, carb, and finding the metrics and asking people to come in and propose solutions of which your company could be one, and you could make the argument, why is this uh, interesting technology, the best of a range of approaches? So that's kind of the overall from a governance point of view, what I would like us, how I would like to see is pursuit, uh, you know, moving forward. We've had a couple of presentations about one company and one approach. And I know there's a lot of different approaches and I know this reality check here, like with that trail you showed earlier, the, uh, the one, I guess there's, did that come up here? It's going to come up in a minute.
Yeah.
Like, okay, nobody's going to hold, you, you, you gotta do, you gotta get the job. Anyway, I've, I've spoken enough, but I think like to see an RFP that, that sets out the goals and, and brings in lots of creative.
Like we did with the storage systems.
Yeah.
RFP, yeah. So, but maybe a broader one. So I mean, that's
And if this was, that this, that the vendor would be in the room because he rose to the top of an RFP, not just because you're talking to him.
Yeah. And in fairness to any of the vendors, right?
Yeah.
As we talked about, so well, well received, well received. Um, you know, but, you know, we have, the initial focus, and it, it remains the focus, is, you know, solar PV, right? And so we're pursuing that, but there's a limit because solar requires horizontal. And in fact, um, in parallel, over the past ten months since January, we've been looking at projects that we potentially have an asset ownership outside of our territory, but we basically parked that temporarily. It's not the right time for us to, you know, we don't want to be in the development business, but we do want to be in the generation business for all the reasons that we talked about before, and different complications. But the point being, solar is part of it, but we're going to max out. Right? And I, and the key number I gave you guys last time, we do as much solar as we possibly can in our territory. You know, ten years, not even five years from now, it's not even ten percent of what we need to deliver. Right? So it's good. We got to check the box, but we got to figure out more. And the other thing that we've been, you know, we've been internally working on quite a bit, and, you know, some interns actually made a lot of progress on it, was the low temperature geothermal. So, um, it's not as though. So um, it's not, it's those, somebody came to us, you know, we're out pushing on guys, and I'm, I'm just sharing this with you in terms of how we've gotten to be where we are. It's not people are, we want people to come knocking on doors and say, hey, we have this neat stuff, we understand you guys are innovative enough to try stuff. But we're, we are, we have been in the mode, um, because we've been very kind of closed as an organization. We are trying to create the reputation that we are open to, to, like, we're trying to solve this problem and we want ideas from the outside. So I, I take it at face value, but I just also want you to know, it's not because somebody came to the door.
Yeah, yeah, we went, we went out and find.
Didn't mean it to sound.
No, no, it's okay, just, 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 just balance, so.
Other comments?
Thank you. You're gonna have to replace Mystic. Right? And in territory, replace Mystic, and that's a, it's a good start, and you know, with the volatility in the wind market at the, at the moment, I think uh, we're in the birth of a change. Things are gonna change constantly, um, I think uh keeping open mindedness to, to any, any generation sources is, is, is something we're gonna have to do. Things are gonna change, be very volatile over the next
crazy.
Crazy years, you know, and, and I think you guys are doing a good, good work, you know, this is carbon capture, fuel cells, battery, wh- whatever it takes.
Yeah, exactly.
And replace Pilgrim too, while we're at it.
I want to agree.
With something.
Oh, okay, yeah, got it, check, check, okay, got it.
Okay. Move on to, I make. Milton Cat.
You got this quicker.
Yes, so um, as you know, we um, we did run an RFP uh earlier this year for uh large grid scale batteries. Um, we have presented to you the offer from uh Citizens Energy that we are, you know, still moving forward within parallel. Um, but one of the um, one of the bidders that was not selected was um Caterpillar. Um, uh, but they did come back with us with a different offer. Um, it is a mobile uh unit, is significantly smaller than what the RFP was for, so it's a mobile on a trailer, a lithium ion battery, um, it's five hundred KW output with two hours of duration. Um, they've offered to um, to provide it to us at no cost, they just asked that we share the benefits that it creates with them. Um, so we'll be, you know, we'll be dispatching it during peak periods um, to shave our capacity and transmission charges from ISO. Um, and this is the estimated net benefits from it, so it's about thirty-five thousand dollars a year, it's about a hundred thousand dollars uh net present value. Um, and it, it allows us to try out uh a mobile uh battery technology where we can move things where they're needed, um, and this might have uh, a future um use, what, you know, if we have a customer that, that has a, an issue that we can, we can relocate a battery to their, to their site to provide, uh, you know, obviously the duration is very limited, but it, it could reduce load during um, emergency uh periods. There are concerns about the grid reliability in the winter of, you know, twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six, related to that volatility and gas prices you see. Um, so having the, testing out these mobile forces um, would be a good um, um, we think would be a, a worthwhile um venture. So, you know, we think it's a relatively low risk, um, it is, you know, it's a well-known, understood technology, lithium ion. It is um commercially, there's very little downside, if they don't create any savings, we don't pay them anything. Um, so uh, if they do create it, we, we're only sharing a portion of the savings with them. So um, we would like to move forward with uh signing a three-year agreement with them. Um, we're at the end of the agreement, they can either take the battery away or can uh, we can move it, we, we could, the, the plan is put it at substation three right now, and if we need to move it anywhere else, we can.
Discussion? Bob?
I, I think this is, uh, operationally, how it ties in, I think would be um, excellent for the field ops folks to, to learn how to deploy these things on a more rapid basis. You know, if you are gonna use it, get used to how you phase it in, how you turn it on, how you attach it, you know? Can you just clip it on lines? You know, I mean, is it that simple?
Rotation.
Yep, yeah, tech, plug it in, right? I, I think it's a, a great idea to um
Learn.
Learn from, at, at, at very minimal cost.
Yeah, yeah.
Positive cause.
Positive. That's right.
Get paid to learn.
Get paid to learn.
Something comes with it.
Okay. The discussion?
Uh, what is the game sharing structure?
It's a fifty fifty.
Fifty fifty?
Yeah.
Okay. And no reduction in that share over a certain level, it's fifty fifty straight?
Fifty fifty.
Okay. And what happens after the three years, you know, if we don't give a back, can we? Purchase this, can we?
I think it's negotiable, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
When would it start?
They can, they say they can deliver by the end of the year.
Next month. It's mobile.
Yeah. Ready to go.
We smile at that. Seriously, there's no site prep, right? I mean, we don't, there's no foundation, so again, it's, it's a learning opportunity. It, it's a, it's a little out of the, it's not way out of the box, it's a below the box, but it's like, we should, it's just, we should try it.
And just one, like, why not two?
We could do two?
It's like free money.
Let's, let's, well, let's see.
Let's see one work.
Sorry, it takes money to run it, right, we get, you get a.
Yeah, well, that's, you know, it's, it's, it's a battery, it's not a generator, right, so there's a, there's a limit. It's gotta be charged, so I mean, we gotta learn, right, and there's a lot to this. But it is mobile, anyway, so.
Okay.
On, on the learning, uh in terms of um safety and training and things like that for the staff who's gonna be maintaining this. Um, particularly given it's a lithium ion battery, what kind of programs do they offer for that?
So we have an existing lithium ion battery at substation three already, so, you know, our staff is accustomed to that.
Okay.
We also have a generator there, a Milton Cat generator, um, so they are familiar with turning uh, connecting things and turning them on. Um, but there will be, you know, they will provide whatever training that we require.
And, and the maintenance of the system and the replacement if things fail is on them. We're not buying this unit, this is on a shared savings program, so this is strategically what we are doing right now is, we, for storage assets, we'll put them under some sort of an E, energy services agreement, we don't want to own them quite yet. Um, but as we learn more, we'll get down that, that point, and then generation assets, we do want to own for all the reasons we talked about before. So a different strategy depending upon what the asset is.
Ready for the motion?
Yeah.
Um, move that the RMLD Board of Commissioners on the recommendation of the Citizens Advisory Board vote to accept the General Manager's recommendation to contract Milton Cat under an energy services agreement for battery storage services.
That's seconded, seconded, seconded. Further discussion? I see now all those, and please raise your right hand. Motion carries five zero. All right, the policy review.
Policy review. We're halfway through.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mike.
Um, so this is facility and property use. Um, this is actually the seven-three vision, uh, we went, but so we, we, we've done two things fundamentally. Um, one of them is we're trying to move procedural stuff to procedures and have the policy focus on the policies themselves, so there was simplification. But I think in this particular case, the bigger um note that is worth discussion is that um, in the interest of maintaining security and in the interest of simplifying, um we have not been open to public for quite some time. Um, we will, even with this policy, if other town departments need a space to do work like um, special training programs of the fire or police department, which we've done in the past, we will be open to that. But um, we're not, the, the, the proposed policy here is not to be open to um groups within the town. And part of it is, we don't have the space that we once did, you know, we're a little bit bigger than they were three years ago. Um, and so for those, so that's, the, the bigger discussion is um not to be an open public building. Um, whereas in the past, in a, in a simpler world, it would have been easier for us to do. Uh, there are other small stuff in, but that's the biggest, biggest change, is the, is the reduced openness.
Yeah, go ahead.
Um, so what's the practical impact of that? Are there any organizations who currently use the space that?
No, since COVID started, we haven't really been open at all, and then we started when COVID kind of broke, we were like, okay, how do we do this, but um, you know, this is, there is, there are security requirements of this building, so we do have a variety of locked doors. We, we haven't, you know, um we haven't done all the provisions of the building to make this space or the cafeteria, the cafeteria actually we could do right now, but not this space to be um, secure from um any party coming into this part of the building. We haven't, we could do it technically. Um, but my recommendation is not to do it, it's additional cost and expense to us in time. Um, and we also don't want to expose ourselves to the security element, and we just, we'd like to be status quo, which is we're gonna run this while we are a public entity, we're not an open public building. It's kind of a summary. Go ahead.
I feel like what we talked about before was, the senior center said they didn't have enough space, and sometimes that was for one-on-one conversations about whatever senior needs are, and that maybe they could use the small conference room across the hallway with a town employee, it wouldn't be two residents in one talk.
So we've had, I think, I, I know I've done it with one or two of you, maybe, I can't remember who, but, you know, a couple of years ago, I did a couple of different conferences, I think you and I, we did conversations with, with some of the seniors about.
Oh, in the lobby.
We did in the lobby, and the lobby's fine, because that is currently secure and it has hours.
Yep.
Um, and it doesn't require maintenance, there's no computer systems, there's none of that stuff, um. We want to serve the community, but we think the best way for us to serve it is to focus on delivering energy and not facilities. That's it.
I know. So this was a critically minded room at one point, before
Yeah.
the previous general manager, this was an openly used room.
It was.
Um, and, you know, COVID changed a lot of things, but there aren't ready very many larger rooms in ready, that, that, they're just not available. Um, I thought the library would have had a larger room, it ended up being very cut up, very smaller rooms. Um, uh, the police department had a room, that room disappeared. I mean, I, I understand the pros and the cons of having an open room, because you want the room someone has to clean it up. Um, you know, these are a fee, you know, people come in, they make a mess, well, who's, you know, you can then say, no, you can't have the room anymore, but then they made a mess and someone has to clean it up. Um, I think there's ways to, to manage that. Um, who gets to use the room, how often it's used? You know, you have a schedule, you know, you, you work that schedule with, with your personnel. Um, and make it available for certain timeframes only, and, and that, that work within that group, it's not open all the time, every day, you know, three sixty-five.
We do, I'm gonna use it from a lot.
Yeah, yeah, you know, obviously during the day and, and, and it's hours of operation during employment hours, that's not, so it would be, it, you know, say from four until nine period, you know, that's it, or, or whatever, whatever those timeframes would be. You know, you know, on certain days, maybe it's Tuesday, Wednesday, there's, you know, it's not Monday, Friday, it's, it's certain things, I don't, before you, you shut it out, I think maybe that, that should be a, a, a thought process, lock it down that door, that door, you know, other doors in, you know, it's, you know, construction's construction, you could do, you can lock.
I, I say we can't, I'm, I'm not.
Um, I just, you know, you know, would there, is there a, a demand, you know, there is none right now because it's been closed for so long. You know, it, and, and right now, what, what can you get in here, you know? Less than twenty, twenty people, it's not, it's not huge, right, but it's still a, a decent size, you know, you, you can do so, but I, that, I still think we should have a, an, an open use for this particular space.
So who would you suggest use that? What, what groups?
That, that's my, my decision to pick.
Before we, we hear from uh Karen, I, I wanted to say I, I, I agree with Bob on this and we have the, so many discussions in the town about the need for space and talking about building things and spending millions of dollars for a new building for X for senior events. Meanwhile, this room in particular sits empty lots.
Not during the day.
Okay, weekends. Now, granted, you'd have to have somebody who can, who can come in through the front door, you have a parking lot that we just built with car chargers in it. And people could come in the lobby and there's this big room here and a room there, all of which could be, that's a Bob's point, could be walled off, it seems like, I don't want to shut this down right now, uh, right, we don't have somebody knocking on the door saying, can I use it? So it makes it easier to. Yeah, but I mean, it seems like it should be part of the mix to me, and not, we should not do this tonight, we should be asking those questions and uh, that's just my opinion. And maybe looking if there's a way to do it that answers the concerns, but also maybe is a source of revenue, maybe it saves the town something versus building spending X million building a new building for some purpose when flexible spaces like this, or the library or whatever, could be brought to bear. It's, it's, and then maybe the revenue piece that comes into our, they, they not only covers, but also okay, we're making this space useful and there's a little stream that comes in, you know, keeping rate down.
Karen, do you want to speak?
I should say to Bob's point, when the police station lost that room, I think it was a six-figure job to lose a room.
Oh, it was a very, it was maybe even more than that.
Yeah, I, I just remember what, yeah.
Karen, do you want to speak?
I would, I would just say, I would, I would love, um great to hear that, but you've done a remarkable contribution, but amazing, and and I'm losing, I'm not seeing any demands right now, like, we were kind of waiting for the blocks and information to be developed.
Yep.
Um, and, and you took again to Bob's point, and see the library's full of capacity. I think we could get, we would get a lot of sports meetings, last month at the um library, we booked it, might get a lot of sports meetings, but we would love to disrupt the management tomorrow, um, we won't be in here, we'll be done by nine. We could be providing, that would be, we should, that's a great point, I forgot, we we're in the Slipboard Room every night, it's, it's hard work, it's not a good conversation, and it's small, but, but you did lose that. The library is completely blocked, and it's, I think it is a bigger of all, because it helps.
Yeah, I, you know, again, you know us, right, we want to serve, right, we're not, we're not trying to be screwed for the overs. Um, if, if you want, we will go back, you guys can decide to vote or not.
The only comment I want to make is you have to remember there are four towns in this district.
It's true.
So if you open up this room, it's just not ready, you're gonna, you should open it up to, you've got to open it up to all four towns.
Not necessarily.
Yes, yes, I, I agree with that, no, you, you gotta open up to all four towns, because, you know.
The four towns would all benefit from any offset of costs by a, a little income stream from it or whatever.
Well, that's
I don't know.
Do you think that, because we're in red?
I feel literally he's gonna come here for a meeting, I, I just don't.
I don't see a little league, I see maybe a, a town board or something that wants to have some sort of meeting.
Well, town, so the town board, um, we've left in, so that's open.
Yeah.
It's, it's non-town groups, so it, town departments are, would be open, we have to, we have to walk through the process and we have to still do stuff.
You know, I, I've been around, when we had outside groups here, and they, they messed up the building, the parking, they blocked driveways, you know? I think, I think there's still, we're still around, nimble thimbles, I think it's still around.
They did make a quilt for us, right?
Made me a nice quilt.
And, and they were, they were good guests.
They were a good guest.
And I wasn't here when that was happening, but they, they left, they left a nice.
Right, but then we had rate payers that said, hey, you know, you're in the, you're in utility business, what, what are you doing?
I, I didn't get the distinction about. Yeah, so, yeah, that's fair, so forgive me for not, so, you know, I'm being a little harsh, but we said the exceptions, any town department board or committee within RMLD service territory that wishes to use RMLD, RMLD facilities or outdoor properties, right? Um, you know, and we have, we have the bike swap, right? Um, shall contact RMLD to request permission to use RMLD facilities and or outdoor properties, and it will be, there'll be a form and a procedure and all that kind of stuff.
That doesn't change.
No, wait, that, that, that would, that's in the new proposed context, that, that, that's in there, so.
It's number two.
It's number, yeah, exactly right, so we did make that, so, we, so from that perspective, again, you know, we want to be helpful and supportive. Well, so, so, yeah, it's only gonna be twenty-six thousand a night.
Yeah, exactly, because you have, now you guys, you guys go late, and, and, and I think that's, but, yeah, I think bumpers, you know, on, on, on the room, meaning time limit, not, not time limit in the room, but, you know, you're. But, yeah, I think bumpers, you know, on, on, on the room, meaning time limit, not, not time limit in the room, but, you know, you're, you're done by. Nine or ten, because if, if you are gonna schedule it around your facilities group, work with them, talk with them, what's good, I, I don't think weekends are appropriate. Right, cuz now you're bringing somebody in, right, uh, personally, but, you know, unless you're paying for it, you know, you gotta pay for the facilities folks.
So it's gotta be here, yeah.
Yeah, they have to be here, but.
And IT as well, yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, this, you know, we spend, well, anyways, that's, so the way it's currently configured, right, the current draft is that. The towns, right, town departments, boards or committees, um, would be welcome. So from that perspective, we, you know, again, we just, we don't wanna, we're not in the, you guys heard me. Yeah, we, 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 we thought this was a reasonable middle ground, my apologies for being so harsh first time around, but.
No wedding receptions. That, that we can all agree on.
Journey, journey cup scouts.
And it's also about using the library, they are hardcore, you have to be out thirty minutes before the library closes.
Yeah.
So if they close at nine, at eight-thirty, you have to be packed up and gone.
But there, but there are other meetings, you know, I'm one of the trustees of Briarwood where I live, and we had to have a meeting of all the, the owners. We actually, for a hundred dollars, we rented the St. Agnes, you know, upstairs room for a hundred dollars.
That's a big room, yeah.
And it's a big room up there, you know, we rented that, so, and they're, they're available, you know, a hundred dollars, we, we rented it, we, we. You know, it, it was actually a donation, I gotta, I gotta make sure that I. We donated to the church.
So what are we doing, we voting?
Yeah, I'm, I'm ready for a motion, you wanna make a motion?
Vote.
Okay.
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 Go ahead.
Um. Move the RMLD Board of Commissioners approved policy thirteen, facility and property use revision seven, as presented on the recommendation of the general manager.
Okay, is that second?
Uh, could, could I make a suggestion?
Sure.
Um, if Greg, um. Before we vote on it, if, but, um, if you could talk to the facilities folks kindly. Um, maybe come back with the, uh, uh, not a version, and it doesn't have to be immediately. Um, or.
About this.
Are we vote on this one and then you, you give us like four months?
And then, and then in May, I'll come back with a, okay, April.
Okay.
I'll go back with a, a proposed revision.
Okay, well then, why, why vote on it now?
Well, cuz it, 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 it does open it up a little bit.
So it's good now? Thought it was bad?
No, no, it, it opens it up to town departments, right? There's, there's some light in there.
With the condition that we go back and, and try and open it up in April, that's fine.
Okay. All right, is there a second on that motion? Second, Mr. Colton, second for the discussion?
So if, um, a committee, a town committee wants to come and use it, do they have to be out by a certain time?
Um.
Cause they can go on.
So, you know, not, you know, nine, nine-thirty, cuz we have to have people here, and they're not, right, so, so this, so. Um, the answer to your question, yes, at some point, is it gonna be nine o'clock, can the lights go out? No. Is it gonna be ten-thirty and the lights go out? Probably, I don't know, between there, I don't.
I feel like it should be in writing though, in, everyone should have an agreement that we will be gone by.
Well, that'll be, we can put that, we can put that in the application, right, we'll, we'll put that in the procedure stuff, right, then it'll be in the policy, this policy, again, the idea here is. You guys need to set the policy and we'll work the details.
Got it.
That's, that's the intent, so, I think big picture.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Motion carries five zero. Very good. One procurement. Now, why don't you read the motion and we'll get the.
Okay, sure.
We'll get the discussion, okay?
I move that bid IFB twenty twenty-three forty for line truck chassis and trailer inspection, preventative maintenance. And repair service be awarded to Taylor and Lloyd Inc. for one hundred ninety-three thousand, five hundred nine dollars pursuant to MGL. C thirty B as the lowest responsive and responsible bidder on the recommendation of the general manager. This is a three-year contract.
So the background on this.
First up, let me get a second, you got a second?
Oh, so sorry.
Second.
Second, okay, we got a second, okay, now, go ahead, Greg.
Okay, great, so, um, these are for the heavy-duty line trucks, um, that we use every day. Um, we have an existing program, maintenance program, so the contract's up for renewal. Um, Taylor and Lloyd is the existing, um, provider of this service. Um, in twenty twenty, when this bid went out, they were a hundred and sixty-nine, so roughly a hundred and seventy thousand. Um, their new bid was a hundred and ninety, almost a hundred and ninety-four thousand dollars. They were the only bidder, most of the other ones have multiple bidders, but they are the only bidder on this particular bid. Um. So we'll probably, well, so anyways, so, so that's a key piece, it is, um. There's a, a bunch of, this is for the ongoing inspection, maintenance of the vehicles, so it's something we need to do on a regular basis. Um, we might look, not might, we will probably look at revising the bid package when we do it again in three years. Um, cuz Taylor Lloyd was the only one that bid on it last time. So we know right now in the, in the world of equipment maintenance, um, there's a lot of business. Um, now they wanna keep the business, um, but it would be nice if we had multiple bidders on the project like this, this particular round, we don't. So the recommendation is to execute this cuz we need to do it, the increase is not dramatic. Um, that's more questions.
Okay, questions, comments? Okay, all those in favor, please raise your right hand, opposed, that motion carries five zero. Next one.
Hey, um, move that bid IFB twenty twenty-three forty-one for line truck lift equipment inspection, preventative maintenance and repair service. Be awarded to James A. Kylie Company for eighty-nine thousand, seven hundred and twenty-six dollars. Pursuant to MGLC thirty B as the lowest responsive and responsible bidder on the recommendation of the general manager. This is a three-year contract.
Uh, another situation of a single bid.
Let me get a second first, you got a second on that? Right, second, okay, yep, go ahead, Greg.
So another single bid, um, the existing vendor bid, um, this one's a little bit different though, and the price actually went down. And the reason why the price went down is one of the, um, uh, uh, maintenance items, um, that we had on it was removed. Cuz the equipment, again, this is, um, uh, lift truck, it's a smaller part of our portfolio, it's not the eighteen trucks that we have. Um, but it wasn't required, so, um, uh, we actually reduced it, so it's eighty-nine thousand dollars, that a hundred and twelve, three-year contract. Needs to be done.
I, I just have a general comment, in the past, we usually had, what, what the budget amount was for this, usually is in the. In the, in explanation to us that we get signed.
Yeah, we'll, we'll do that, yeah, I've never seen that in the past, so the people that create these are the ones that have been creating for a long time, I'll ask why they dropped them, but I remember seeing them.
Yeah.
Even in my short tenure.
Yeah, I noticed these two don't have it, I, I.
I see that as well, yeah.
Okay. All right, further discussion? All those in favor, please raise your right hand, opposed, that motion carries five zero. Yep, keep going Pam, you're doing good.
All right, move that bid twenty twenty-three forty-two for HVAC and ice machines, preventative maintenance and repair service be awarded to Ambient Temperature Corporation. For one hundred and thirty, one thousand, four hundred and thirty-one dollars pursuant to MGLC thirty, section thirty-nine M. As the lowest responsible and eligible bidder on their recommendation of the general manager. This is a three-year contract.
All right, I got a second?
Second.
Second, okay, Greg.
Great, so, um, this is primarily for HVACs, uh, equipment, we have fifty-one pieces of HVAC equipment in, in our network. Um, and then there are two ice machines, so I know it looks like it's HVAC and ice machines, but there are just two ice machines, so. I have to smile every time I read this one, it's a three-year contract, um, we actually had, um, uh, four bidders. Um, and, uh, it, so, and there was a pretty broad range that you saw in the package, right? There were two in the hundred and thirty thousand dollar range and two in the hundred and eighty thousand dollar range. Um, so, um, you know, as, as per the policy, right, um, the lowest responsible, um, and eligible bidder. Um, worked out to be ambient temperature control, um, and their bid package was a hundred and thirty-one thousand, which was the lowest. By six thousand of all of them, uh, they took no exceptions to the bid. And, and it's preventive maintenance of our HVAC systems, including materials, um, permits, disposal fee, et cetera, it's pretty comprehensive.
Okay. Any discussion? If not, I'm moving to vote, all in favor, please raise your right hand, opposed, that motion carries.
Hey, uh, move that bid twenty twenty-three forty-seven for hourly rates. Uh, for as needed distribution line work of all types be awarded to Powerline Contractors Inc. pursuant to MGLC thirty, section thirty-nine M. As the lowest responsible and eligible bidder on the recommendation of the general manager. This is a three-year contract.
Just seconded? So I hear a second, yep, Greg, you're up.
Great, so, um, so this is basically for outsourced, um, line work. Um, and we sent it out to sixteen companies, again, um. We got five, uh, responses, of which three, um, qualified. Uh, the three that qualified, um, uh, power line contractors, um, ended up being, um. An, an, a margin, I say marginally, so four hundred and seventeen thousand versus four hundred and ninety-five versus five hundred and sixty-one for the other two bidders. Um, but they ended up, they're the current ones we have as well, um, so they were the lowest cost, we know them, they qualified. Um, the other two bidders that bid the system, um, did not, um. You know, they, they didn't fully, um, fulfill the requirement to do, um, a combination of energized and de-energized equipment. Particularly at the thirty-five KV, um, well, both fifteen and thirty-five KV lines, so, three bidders, lowest cost, happens to be the incumbent. Um, and it's for basically outsourced line work.
Okay. Any questions, discuss?
And a formal bid process.
No, I'm moving to vote, all in favor, please raise your right hand. Motion carries five zero. General Manager's point.
Great, so I wanna get back into the habit of, of giving you a quick summary at the very end, um, but I also wanna have it written in the package, just. I just think it's appropriate and professional, um, three, three big, there's a bunch, there's a lot of stuff happening here, um, but people. So we're, we're calling it people operations, um, I think it works, but it's, it's basically personnel, what used to be called HR, what used to be called talent. Um, but, you know, a couple of key, key pieces here, my apologies, um, the big picture, uh. You know, overall, the team is positive and energized, but I think, right, but in addition, that we're in there engaged, and so. Um, it, we have been doing a lot more communication, here's what we're going, here's what we're trying to do. Um, people see the need of the stuff we're trying to do, the strategy, um, you know, we're pushing the organization in terms of, of. Trying to get more done, but also things that are out of the box, you know, we're out of just, we're out of the, just maintain the business mode. Um, but people are engaged from that perspective. Um, two other key pieces, uh, on the people piece, um, we continue to develop people internally, right, we wanna train people, we, we kinda joked about that earlier, but. We made, seriously, we do invest in, in the people of this organization, um, we have a great team, truly, uh, of the. Of the roughly ninety people, including our, uh, our interns and our co-ops, um. So four internal moves, and again, allowing people to find a better place so that they aren't stuck in a rut, right, they wanna try something new and different. And four internal promotions, which is part of the development, so all good stuff. Um, the intern programs, right, a year ago, uh, we had three interns, um, in the program, we just kinda restarted it, uh, it proved to be successful. Uh, we had seven interns this summer, um, they added value, you know, part of the goal behind the intern program is exposure. Um, for them to learn, um, for them to actually do stuff for us, and we mentioned the low-temperature geothermal and a whole bunch of other projects, um. You know, a lot of stuff that we can delegate to them to run this analysis or do this research, et cetera, so. Um, that's worked out very well, and then we have five, um, for the summer and the fall as part of the call-up program, so we're gonna continue, the call-up program is a six-month program. Um, you guys remember the days where Northeastern used to be pretty big in the program, well, Northeastern and Wentworth are now part of our program, so we have an ongoing relationship, so. Kind of a big change, so it's really good to help feed, we've got, um, you know, as you, as you had seen from, uh, Sarah's, um, snapshots over the past, right? We have a nice spread of age groups in this organization, so it's not everybody who's been there, you know, who's been here for thirty years and are about to retire, so that was the case. Five or six years ago, so we have a nice, nice perspective, which is great. Um, I think the other piece, you know, we talked about the pathways program, so Redding High School, right, we're kind of excited about that. Um, we've got six openings right now, they're in the process, um, but three of them are the director levels, so we have, uh, interviews tomorrow for the Director of Engineering. Um, interviews tomorrow, we have, we have two strong candidates, um, that we're looking at for that, so really trying to get that position. The engineering position filled and the operation position filled, um, overall, you know, nothing's perfect, but things are going very well from a team perspective.
Great question, on that, for the, uh, the summer interns, any opportunity to bring any of them on board after graduation?
Well, yes, go ahead, Bill.
Yeah, there are, and it's a great way to try out talent, so, and to see how they like working here and the territory like them, so, yeah, we are, uh. Uh, there, there is one graduate that's, uh, coming out, uh, in May, and we hope that he'll come on board.
Yeah, so Doug, yeah, it's part, the part of the goal is to, so, a can, a group of candidates that wanna come join us, but also to spread the word with other people back at. College, right, hey, that utility isn't what you thought it was, they're crazy over there. Um, there's a.
Keep going.
Yep, yep, big, big picture, um, there, so, there was a, a, a lot of interest a year ago relative to some big customers coming into the territory. One of them ended up going to Dubbins, the other one went to Tennessee, but there's two new large industrial cus- customers are actually coming up into, that are. Uh, in the process of moving up to, uh, uh, Ballard Vale and Upton Road, that industrial area, so less, all the stuff we're trying to do. A, to keep the substation moving forward, which is on schedule, actually did put that on here, I'll come back to that in just a second, um. But, uh, anyway, so that mobile, that mobile battery system will actually be appropriate next summer, if these guys materialize to the extent they will, so new, new customers coming in, which is good. Um, we, uh, uh, Substation Five and Substation Four. Uh, we did some major work on transformers this summer, um, and into this fall. And it's basically complete, we have one other, it's not tied to the transformer, we have one other bit of maintenance to do this weekend, but Station Four and Station Five will be, um, tuned up. Um, not just regular maintenance, but we had to do some work on one of the transformers in Station Five, so we have more life. The reason why that's important besides basic reliability, it also gives us flexibility if we decide that we want to. Um, look at a different location for Station Six, we are not making that announcement, we're not saying anything. We actually went through the system impact study at ISO on the fourteenth, um, so I didn't get the final report, but it was a non-contested grid, grid presented. So that's our, uh, Substation Six, so that's in process, we're still on schedule to do that. Uh, be fully commissioned by, um, the end of twenty twenty-five, but if we have to make a change, the work that we've been doing on Station Four and more specifically Station Five. Give us runway if we need it. Um, we've talked a little bit about the battery storage projects, Maple Meadows continues, we're, we're trying to get a meeting with Mass D E P in place, so, uh, just. That's not, you know, we, we, we were hoping to have acquired that property by now, um, but. Uh, you know, it's gonna take a little bit longer to clear title, et cetera, but we've got a couple mechanisms to allow us maybe to shorten that timeline, which is great. And then, um, on the twenty-first, I'll do a presentation to the Select Board of Reading. Um, key topics are gonna be strategy highlights, just a little bit of overview of the twenty twenty-four rate expectations, and then Ash Street Campus, which I'll talk about in just a moment. Um, and then I also have a presentation on the twenty-seventh to the Lynnfield Select Board. Um, strategy highlights, but Glen Street, there's a, they're in the process of building a, a couple of things, they're, they're new. The key thing for us is a new water treatment center on Glen Road, so they have an interest in us putting solar on the roof and potentially adding a battery project. Adjacent to it, which we would like to have in place, that would also potentially serve as potentially battery backup. Now, our reliability is very good, but still, there's value to them to have battery backup for their water system, so just kind of nice, good stuff going on with the different towns. Um, there's stuff going on with Wilmington and North Reading, but those are two specific things that are coming up shortly, and then, um. Last quick update, so Ash Street Campus, so big picture, um, we've talked about this extensively, right? And, you know, what we, we talked about earlier this year was, um, between the town manager and, and the, the town of Reading. Um, and RMLD, you know, let's try and make something happen, cuz we have a need, our building, um, our operations building, which is Building Two Eighteen. Which is in the top portion, it needs a major refit, um, we've, we've kind of, it needs work, um, so we need to make a decision in terms of where we're going to go. You guys know that we have been exploring different places to go within Reading and outside of Reading, those are all, there's lots of baggage with all of those discussions. Um, there's probably a better location for us, but there's not an obvious place for us to go, when I say a better location. The geography of, of Ash Street and Main Street. Simon Ways, US Rob, all of you? Oh, man. Yeah, well, we. We're very flexible and open, uh, we truly, we truly are, um, but. There's, there's a, so, so we actually did, we, we explored the ten acres that you need to build a bridge to, and we actually, we, we dug into it really quickly and deeply after the meeting that, that I had with Fidel, I don't know, three or four months ago, but at the end of the day, there's probably only two acres that's buildable. Yeah, so it's not, but it sounded good on the surface, and so, but anyways, again, we do a lot of exploration on land, so, not to excite. The bottom line is, with the plan right now is, it's most likely that we will remain on this campus, and so we're gonna work down the path that we're gonna be here. So, part of the discussion, part of the action lines that I took was to talk to the owners, um, behind us, there's three different owners. I've talked to all three of them informally, they're all open to a different configuration, potentially being bought out, something. So, so that's good, that there's, there's an openness, um, the town, so we've got, you know, we've had ongoing dialogues with, with the town, Ben in particular, Ben Cares. Um, they recently received a community, um, planning grant, um, that would include cre- creating some vision updates, some conceptual ideas in terms of what this might look like. So we're gonna be engaged in that. Um, yes, I know he, yes, and it's, and we will not, yeah, so good, good. Um, so the intent, so we had put together, this is a, the, the key milestones here at the bottom are a snapshot from a slide that we shared, but, um, you know, the intention is to, in this, the first half of this year, basically, to put together some concepts, um, to do some, and just to keep the ball moving forward, because it's gonna take four or five years to actually pull this off, but we gotta be moving now. Now, you know, there's, there's lots and lots and lots of questions, so we'll talk more about this, but just so you guys know, there's work being done behind the scenes. You know, it's not, it, it is, it is a key piece of our infrastructure in terms of where we operate out of. Um, and the working assumption right now is we will probably be here for a while, so as we make investments in, wherever we make investments is where we're gonna be. So, anyways, that's a quick, quick snapshot in terms of a whole bunch of different things.
So when this building was built, it was built, when this building was built, was the idea would be here for fifty years.
Of this building?
This building.
Well, it might still be here.
You're right.
But, but we've got to do, you know, so, the, the real driver for the change is the Ops Center, and the more, and, you know, we're, we don't have, anyways.
Yeah.
I'm with you.
Okay.
And so, let's see, ninety-four, so we have, what, thirty years? We got twenty more years to go.
Thirty years.
Thirty years so far.
Yeah, thirty years so far. So again, there's twenty to go.
Twenty to go. That's my quick update. Any questions? There's a lot going on, bottom line.
Yeah. Greg, anything else? Anybody else want to bring up?
Do you want any commissioners to go with you to those select board meetings, or you don't care?
Happy to, please.
Yeah.
Um, yeah, ready? So next Tuesday night, um, I'll, Erica, Erica will share the agenda with you.
Yes, and if more than, uh, two of you plan to attend, if three up, then you just need to post it, so I will make out to you guys.
Yeah, so why don't you post it, because I, I'm planning to be there.
Great.
Uh, on both, both in, uh, Reading and Lynnfield. Yeah, so you're probably better off to post, just to make sure.
I'll go to the Reading one.
Yeah, why don't you post just to make sure?
Good.
If we don't, if it doesn't need it, we don't need it. We don't need it, we, if we don't need it, we don't need it, but, you know. No, I, I, I'd like in person. I much prefer in person, I mean, you know, so, okay, so then the thing we got is scheduling. So, uh, based on the warrant schedule is in the agenda, so I think, um, November, I think Mr. Colton's got the, um, accounts payable, Pam's got the payroll, and Mr. Talbot covering the, the tab, the account, the, uh, uh, cab, which, which he's already done. So, we got December.
I think I did a pretty good job, too.
You did it that time. In December, uh, Mr. Talbot is gonna cover the accounts payable, Marley has got the payroll, and Pam, we're covering the C, the CAP. Okay, and then we got our meetings. Did anybody got any problems with the, with the Nick, the December fifteenth meeting? Any conflicts at this point?
Nah.
What? Timing, if we could push this at least till seven-fifteen, that would be great. See, if the cab is going first, it's a little tight, are they, uh?
Yeah, that's fine, I, I, I can, seven-fifteen is fine.
What, each, every meeting?
We used to start six.
Well, the cab's gonna meet before us.
Each, each, yes.
Yeah, because they meet before us, then, you know, because I came in about quarter of, and they were still going, you know, and then you gotta change the room over. You know, Erica's gotta change the room over, you know? You know, and she forgot, she almost forgot my gap.
Are they all, so far, the next three meetings on this schedule, are they before?
They what?
Erica, so.
Are they seven?
January, February.
Uh, that works. So basically, cab's at five-thirty, all the same days, and then four at.
Okay.
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 All right.
So, yeah.
Seven-fifteen is fine. Okay, chairman's standing time. All right, anybody, anything else for open session at this point? If not, then I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Move, move to adjourn.
Um, Mr. Talbot moves that the Board of Commissioners adjourn regular session. Uh, is that seconded? Second, all those in favor, raise your right hand. We're adjourned, five zero.
Thank you all.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.